Five seconds.
Good evening and welcome to tonight's Yukon City Council Municipal Authority. It is April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven P. M. We are here in the council chambers, which is the Centennial Building at twelve South Fifth Street in the fantastic city of Yukon, Oklahoma. Tonight, our invocation will be by Pastor Ernie Blitch from the Good Fight Church, followed by our flag salute. Would you please stand?
Thank you. Father God, we thank you for opening up this city, open arms to you. Thank you for the blessings that is on this city. Thank you for the leadership right in this room. Thank you for those that aren't here that are firefighters, police officers for protecting this city, for keeping it safe. Thank you for the kids and the schools, Father. Thank you for keeping them safe, Father. Be with the teachers, allow them to teach your next generation that will run this city as well. God, you are good. We love you and we go before you and just thanking you for allowing us to be in you. And I pray that you go before us today, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with which we give justice for all. Row call.
Selby. Wooten.
Here.
Yonda.
Here.
Gilliland. Zimmerman.
Here.
This time, we will do a couple of proclamations. So if the Main Street Board would come forward. Andrea. Conrad. Conrad, can you have somebody else take pictures? Mitchell?
Smile, Mitchell.
And the small business. It's my honor tonight. This is near and dear to my heart, small business, local business here in Yukon, and that is the soul of the community. So whereas America's progress has been driven by pioneers who think big, take risk, and work hard, and whereas from the storefront shops that anchor Main Street to the high-tech startups that keep America on the cutting edge, small businesses are the backbone of our economy and the cornerstone of our nation's promise. Whereas when we support small business, jobs are created and local communities preserve their unique culture. Whereas as we recognize that America's thirty million small businesses create nearly two out of three net new jobs in our economy, and that nearly twenty new small businesses have opened since the beginning of the pandemic in downtown Yukon, we must discuss ways to go further to support entrepreneurs and our resolve to create jobs and spur economic growth. Whereas the President of the United States has proclaimed National Small Business Month annually since nineteen sixty-three to highlight the programs and services available to entrepreneurs through the U.S. Small Business Administration and other government agencies. Whereas the city of Yukon supports and joins in this national effort to help America's small businesses do what they do best: grow their business, create jobs, and ensure that our communities remain as vibrant tomorrow as they are today. Now therefore, I Shelley Selby, Mayor of Yukon, do hereby proclaim May twenty twenty-three as Small Business Month in Yukon, Oklahoma, and I urge citizens of Yukon to show your appreciation by supporting small businesses during Small Business Month and throughout the year, given under my hand and seal on this eighteenth day of April twenty twenty-three. Who wants to take it? All right. Let's give them small businesses a big hand. Okay, this same group is going to stay up here. Carol, yes. Oh, Carol, what are you, why were you not up here? Get on up here. We have the most modest Main Street group. Carol, you're part of Main Street, but I want you right here. We recently had our Main Street Awards Program, and in that, I was very honored. I was Design Point last year, and in Design Point, we did our Historic Month, and that was all done by Carol Mountie-Bond, and she won our Volunteer of the Year for that. Because if you did not check out our Historic Month, all of the different posters that she put up, the contest, all of the hard work that she went into that, it was incredible. Well, if you thought last year was great, wait till this year, because it's even better. She has set the bar truly high. So whereas the National Trust for Historic Preservation established May as Historic Preservation Month in nineteen seventy-three as a way to celebrate historic places, promote heritage tourism, and acknowledge the social and economic benefits of historic preservation. Whereas the spirit and direction of Oklahoma are founded upon and reflected in its historic and archaeological heritage and should be preserved as a living part of Oklahoma life. Whereas it's important to celebrate the role of history in our community and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of Yukon's heritage that has shaped us as people. Whereas Yukon is designated Oklahoma Main Street Community and nationally accredited by the National Trust for Historic Preservation for twenty twenty-three, and whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for communities across the nation for managing growth, sustainable development, revitalizing historic downtown and neighborhoods, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. Now therefore, I Shelley Selby, Mayor of Yukon, do hereby proclaim May twenty twenty-three as National Preservation Month, and I urge the citizens of Yukon to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance. This is given under my hand and seal on this eighteenth day of April twenty twenty-two. Wait. April twenty twenty-three? Okay, we'll have that changed. Oh, no, we will, we will have that corrected and changed for you. And so what I would encourage you, Carol, if you want to just real quickly tell what's going to happen this month of May.
Okay, we have all-new locations, and we have new narratives and new images, and this year, we brought in the Czechoslovakian Heritage. We brought in Dale Robertson's Haymaker Farm. We also brought in the Yukon Mill and the Yukon Mill Office. So we've stretched the corridor a little bit. We also have a thousand dollars in prizes, and we have some little hidden figures. So if you can find them, you get the biggie prizes. So this is fun. I'm the one who has the most fun, so it'll be cool.
We thank you. So check out Downtown for Historic Month. Thank you again, Main Street, for all that you do for our small business community and for Historic Month. We appreciate you. All right. I should have worn my track shoes tonight. All right, at this time, do we have any visitors that would care to speak?
I have no requests, Madam Mayor.
Okay, seeing none. Well, recess as Yukon City Council and reconvene as Yukon Municipal Authority. Item one A, YMA Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve A, the minutes of the regular meeting of April fourth, twenty twenty-three; B, payment and material claims in the amount of two thousand six hundred seventy-nine dollars and thirty cents. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Yonda.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes. Item two A, Presentation and Acceptance of the Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-One, Twenty Twenty-Two Financial Audit Performed by HBC CPAs and Advisors. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
With Mr. Heim at the podium.
Oh, is he going, I thought we voted on that and then they spoke.
Discussion's a good time to do it.
Okay, well then, discuss.
Very good. My name is Chris Heim with HBC CPAs and Advisors. So my presentation is going to be brief because Frank, the, the numbers that are in these financial statements, Frank just went over in detail, and he'll present on them again here in just a moment. But I'm going to start on our auditor's report, which is on page five. So just a, a brief overview, the city staff and Frank's firm compile this eighty-plus pages that is in front of you here. It is then our job to come in and determine if these numbers are reasonably stated, if they can be relied upon for the users of the financial statements, the users, the city councils, the citizens, banks, the state of Oklahoma, et cetera. So that is what this report is here that we're looking at on page five, and I'm just going to walk down a couple of the paragraphs here. So in the first paragraph, it just states that we have audited the accompanying financial statements that are subsequent to this report. The second paragraph is the opinion paragraph, and it states, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects." So present fairly in all material respects, that is a clean opinion, and that's the best opinion that we can offer as auditors. So, so what does that exactly mean? It means that the numbers that, that follow the report can be relied upon and are fairly stated. So the third paragraph there, the basis for our opinions, we're required to perform our audit in accordance with government auditing standards. We're also required to perform our, we're also required to be independent and to meet our ethical responsibilities when auditing. So we believe that we obtain that and obtain sufficient appropriate evidence to form an opinion. And then the last paragraph I'm going to go over is the responsibilities of management. Management is responsible for these financial statements that we're looking at, and they're also responsible for the design, implementation, and maintenance of internal control, which we'll discuss in our second report, which I'm going to jump to now, which is all the way in the back, page eighty-one. Okay, so this is what we call a byproduct of what we're doing here. So we're engaged to form an opinion on the financial statements. But as we're performing procedures, performing testing of transactions, and looking at account balances, we will look at internal controls. We'll also look at your compliance with laws, regulations, state statutes, things of that nature. So in the past, and it's been a while now, I think it was twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, we did have some findings, and that's where the findings would be reported in this report. And I'm happy to report that there were no issues of non-compliance, and there were no issues with internal control material weaknesses. So good news with the audit, clean report with auditor's report, and then no findings on internal controls or non-compliance. So I'll open it up to questions now, and I can also take questions after we go over some of the numbers if you'd like as well, so.
Does anyone have any questions?
So you see us as good as we can be for this?
As, as good as we can report on, yeah, so.
Very good.
Thank you so much.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, now we will vote.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Yonda.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes. Okay, item three A, information item only. Performer presentation by Frank Crawford, Crawford and Associates, P.C.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Our performer score this year was excellent. Thank you. No. Was that short enough?
Yes, I like it.
Yeah, I know. This is the everybody's favorite agenda item when we talk about accounting and numbers. I'll flip you to page five, kind of talk a little bit broadly about what this is. Again, eighty-two pages of an audit report, not designed to be terribly readable by a non-accountant. If you look at the financial statements, they don't look like a typical financial statement. They have way too many columns and way too many rows. It's very difficult to get a feel for what those numbers mean. The performer kind of takes that in, in its entirety, analyzes it, and produces it on a scale of, how are we doing on a scale of one to ten? Ten being excellent financial health and success, a one or a zero being terrible financial health and success, and everybody seems to kind of understand that scale. There can't be a ten, and there can't really be a zero. There's just not a government or governments that exist. Although Puerto Rico is testing my zero theory, their, their financial condition and health is pretty terrible. We're scoring an eight-point-one, that's excellent. If you can get into the eights, it's usually a pretty rare occasion. I've only had two governments in twenty-three years ever get into the nines, and that was only a nine-point-one, and it's only happened twice. So once you can get into the eights, but basically what that means is we're managed well, we're budgeting well, we're watching our, our belt well, and the administration does a great job and has done a great job for a, a number of years now. When things weren't going so well five or six or seven years ago, and we had kind of dug ourselves into a little bit of a hole, we have clearly came out of the hole. Philip and Tammy both, and Jim before Tammy, everybody just buckled together and said, we're going to come out of this, and that's exactly what happened. And now it's easy to say that we're in probably the best financial health that we have been in, at least since I've been looking at this, and probably if you even go back further, I would be surprised to see it any better than this. So again, the score overall, eight-point-one, made up of three components, kind of a health picture, a performance picture, and a sustainability picture. We kind of want to be a fi, above a five in all three of those. Our health position is a high at seven-point-one, it's the highest it's been in quite some time. Our performance, we aced every performance measure, meaning we had a great year of performance, and we have a six-point-three in our sustainability or capability, which means that we can sustain this at this level with the right decisions and careful budgeting and careful management. So that's kind of it. I won't go into any of the guts unless anybody wants to talk about any slide in particular, but overall, echo what Chris said, not only are the numbers clean and there are no findings, the numbers are really good, the best they've been in a while.
Any questions?
Yeah, I was just kind of flipping through there. On page thirty-two, the local sales tax rate.
Yes.
That's one we didn't talk about earlier.
Sure. Would you like me to talk about it a little bit?
Just a little bit.
Sure. In all reality, I probably need to re-benchmark this slide. In other words, when I developed this model twenty-something years ago, a four percent sales tax rate locally would have been considered really high and kind of outrageous, and five percent was unheard of. And now I'm starting to see not only people creep into the fours, I've got governments creeping into the fives. And so even though this slide right now with your sales tax rate at four percent, it, on this model, again, based on twenty years ago benchmarks, we're kind of on the lower end, you know, less than satisfactory, but I think next year I'm going to have to re-benchmark this because inflation has done a lot to us, obviously, in the last couple of years, and a two percent tax rate, which is what I used as a ten, does not exist anymore. I mean, I, I don't have a single community with a two percent local tax rate. So probably need to re-benchmark, meaning that this is probably reporting things a little worse than what they really are, but I just haven't gotten around to re-benchmarking it. But we're clearly going to have to start recognizing that four is probably an average or close to an average rate, because that's pretty much where everybody is, three-seven-five to four-two-five-ish. And then again, as I said earlier, we have several in the higher fours, and then a, you know, half a dozen that have creeped into the, into the fives. So, but twenty years ago, five was unheard of. I mean, that, you were just basically signing your death warrant if you had a five percent local sales tax rate, and now that's much more common. So I'm actually happy you pointed that out. I meant to talk about that earlier, so. So we'll re-benchmark that next year and see what it looks like in, in today's dollars.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
If you were to do it on the fly, what would you say that, that rating would be?
On, on that particular rating?
Yeah.
I would probably say, I would probably say that to be satisfactory or average, we'd probably have to be in the higher threes or a four. So in other words, if I set a four percent tax rate as a, as a benchmark of average, that would be a five. So I may have to reconsider. I, I really kind of do this, instead of just winging it, I usually grab data. So I'll go analyze fifty or sixty or seventy cities in Oklahoma, and I'll, I'll take the lows and the highs, and then kind of average them and see what it, but I, I don't see anything below three anymore at all, and then I see a whole lot of fours. So that's making me think that the average is going to be a four or above, so. But again, I'll, I'll let the data, I'll let the data do it, so, but it does need to be looked at, so.
Thank you.
You bet.
And you as citizens, if you would like to hear a more detailed report, you can go to our study session, which is on Facebook, and this is where he went into great detail and discussed all of this. So feel free to watch the study session. Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, well now adjourn as YMA and reconvene as Yukon City Council. Item one, Consent Docket. Thanks you guys for coming. This item is placed on the agenda so the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of the, all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve A, the minutes of the regular meeting of April fourth, twenty twenty-three; B, payment and material claims in the amount of six hundred thirty-two thousand one hundred nine dollars and thirty-eight cents; the resignation of Inez Andrews from the library board; renewal of inter-local cooperative agreement between the Oklahoma District Court serving Canadian County and the Municipal Court of the City of Yukon for municipal court jurisdiction concerning juveniles; E, Resolution Number twenty twenty-three dash oh-seven, a resolution of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma authorizing entering into an inter-local cooperative agreement for municipal court jurisdiction concerning juveniles; F, designating the items on the attached list from the technology department as surplus and authorizing their sale, trade, donation, or disposal. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Yonda.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Okay, item two, reports of boards, commission, and city officials. Do you have anything for us, Mrs. Churchill?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have some status reports on some projects that we have budgeted for this year and planned, so I would like to give you an update on those. Excuse me. Some of our recently completed projects are the sanitation chute at the transfer station, the partition wall of the Dale Robertson Center. We have completed the drainage box at Sarah and Wagner. That was in cooperation with Oklahoma City. Welch Park Disc Golf Course.
Wonderful.
The library handicap accessible door updates. We have purchased four new vehicles, new Tahos for the police department, and they have all been equipped and are in use. The traffic light at Garth Brooks in Vandement has been replaced. Some current ongoing projects, the police have four new Tahos that are being equipped and waiting on computers. Fire Station Number Two, we're in the process of installing the, a new generator. At the city park, we've got some baseball updates. We've put in new backstops. Batting cages have been put in, and we're in the process of installing bleachers. The city park tennis courts, we're in the process of putting in the fence, putting in lights, and resurfacing is underway. At Kimball Park, we are redoing the tennis courts there. We're putting in a new fence, lights, and resurfacing. At the Kimball Park Drainage Ditch, we did some drainage repair in that earlier in the fiscal year, and we are now putting a new fence that is being installed this week. Upgrades to the signal at Yukon Parkway and Highway sixty-six, in the process of that. The fire department is in the process of implementing Lexi-Pal, Lexi-Pal, a public safety policy and procedure system. We already have that in the police department. At various parks, we have been planting thirty trees. In the next couple of weeks, they were given to us through a don, donation and a grant. The police department, we are going to be installing a security fence. We're estimating that the completion will be done by the end of May. The Jackie Cooper Gym Exterior Rehabilitation Project, weather permitting, we will get that completed in the next thirty days. Technology has been biddy, busy. They have been installing fiber to connect to the city buildings. They had to bore under the railroad to get down to sanitation, and that has been a major, major job. At the community center, we are updating the parking lots with lighting and ADA parking improvements. The community room at the police department, we are updating that, and we are expecting that it will be completed by the beginning of May. We have broke ground at Freedom Trail Playground and Splash Pad. They are currently doing dirt work. And Wilshire Boulevard, we have been waiting on Oklahoma City to complete their de-anexation.
That still hasn't happened?
No. But they are in the process.
Keep calling.
Some upcoming projects that we have, we are going to be doing a masonry repair at Fire Station One. We will also be doing the street striping and some pipe bursting. We will also be doing upgrades to the Parkland East Lift Station. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, that is wonderful, and folks, that is your tax dollars at work. Sounds like we're doing a lot of things. Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask one question? On the police vehicles, is this two separate four vehicles?
Yes, they had a total of eight.
Okay, very good, thanks.
Right, item three, Acceptance of the Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-One, Twenty Twenty-Two Financial Audit Performed by HBC CPAs and Advisors. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Selby.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Yonda.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Item four, Consider a Motion to Approve Pavement Striping for Garth Brooks Boulevard from Northwest Tenth Street to Vandeman Avenue, Yukon Parkway from Ranchwood Boulevard to Wagner Road, Vandeman Avenue from South Cornwell Drive to nineteen oh-one West Vandeman Avenue, Sheedak Parkway from West Enpoint to Health Center Parkway, to be completed by Action Safety Supply Company, LLC, using state contract SWO seven seven six at a cost not to exceed one hundred sixty-one thousand six hundred fifty-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents as recommended by the Public Works Director. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yep, question. Were these, we determined that these were the most important streets to be striped?
Approximately four years ago, we set out a five-year plan to stripe every street in Yukon. We're actually on the fourth year. I believe a few of the council asked the city manager to get a little bit more aggressive this year because we had some complaints in some areas that were in need. And where Tammy found it, I think we had some leftover money in the capital budget, so I believe she found that, those funds and made this, basically this will take care of the end of our five-year plan, and we'll be able to start the plan over again next year. There's a few little pockets that we're not going to complete that we will complete, first of next year's striping plan, but this basically gives us our five-year plan in four.
Is that something we probably should make it a four-year, something to look at?
Well, that's what he's doing.
I'm, I mean, from here on out.
If you'll think four, it's approximately, three and a half years ago, we striped Cornwell, so if you can kind of take a look at that, it's still, so I think, once we get everything complete, I think a five-year plan is, now we have to remember the, the numbers of, we used to could budget about fifty thousand dollars a year in the capital, now that number's up closer, we need around a hundred thousand a year to, to get us where we need to be.
I think that's something we can look at as it comes about each year, because I know for my seniors, Cornwell, it's hard for them to see, the ones at Spanish Cove, but.
This is very much needed, thank you.
And I'd like to remind everybody, we will not be striping in between Vandement and Main Street. We have received a grant that that will be milled and overlaid with new striping, so there's no need, or we feel there's no need to waste the money.
Right.
Within a few months, that's going to be torn right back up. It will not be done through this.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Right, let's vote, please.
Selby.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Yonda.
Yes.
Item five, Consider a Motion to Approve Brewer Construction in Oklahoma City, I mean, excuse me, Brewer Construction Oklahoma, LLC, to perform pipe bursting at eighteen oh-four to eighteen twenty-eight North Ridgeway due to a sewer line failure in an amount not to exceed seventy-one thousand three hundred thirty-six dollars and ninety cents to be paid from America Rescue Plan Act funds using the twenty twenty-three Concrete Asphalt Paving Drainage Water and Sewer Contract. to be paid from American Rescue Plan Act funds using the two thousand and twenty-three concrete asphalt paving drainage water and sewer contract as recommended by the Public Works Director. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Yonda?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Item six, consider a motion to approve Brewer Construction Oklahoma, LLC to perform pipe bursting at six oh-one to six twenty-one West Beam due to a sewer line failure in an amount not to exceed sixty thousand three hundred fifty-three dollars and twenty cents to be paid from the American Rescue Plan Act funds using the two thousand and twenty-three concrete asphalt paving drainage water and sewer contract as recommended by the Public Works Director. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Item seven, consider a motion to approve Brewer Construction Oklahoma, LLC to perform pipe bursting at two oh-nine to two nineteen Tanglewood Drive due to sewer line failure in an amount not to exceed sixty-two thousand seven hundred seventy-six dollars and forty cents to be paid from the American Rescue Plan Act funds using the two thousand and twenty-three concrete asphalt paving drainage water and sewer contract as recommended by the Public Works Director. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Okay, I, can you explain pipe bursting? Cause that sounds fun.
Sounds fun? It's basically, in these areas, there's a lot of fences, storage building, trees, you name it, in these backyards. So basically what they do is go in, we have to do a section from manhole to manhole. They basically go down in the manhole and they basically put what I call a ripper or a destroyer. It basically goes in and bursts the pipe that is there and pulls a new poly pipe right behind it. So all of these yards do not have to be dug up, each service from every house will still have to be, but it's a very small hole compared to, you know, some of these are seventeen, eighteen, average of about ten feet deep. So if you were to dig these, it would cost an amazing amount of money.
So you're a little, literally bursting a pipe and then.
Basically, they go in there, a lot of this pipe is clay or what we call truss pipe. It basically just goes in there, cuts this pipe or bursts it and pulls the new pipe, whoops, sorry, right in place.
I would like, I would like to see that, call me when you do that.
They will be starting Thursday morning.
Okay.
Uh, Ridgeway, if you'd like to go.
All right, I think that would be.
Maybe Friday, give them Thursday, they need to get set up and there's a lot of prep, but.
Very good, thank you for letting us know.
Come with me, okay? All right, let's vote, please, on item seven.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes. Item eight, consider a motion to approve Brewer Construction Oklahoma, LLC to perform pipe busting at, or per bursting, sorry, at three oh-one as billed to two, nine oh-six South Second Street due to a sewer line failure in an amount not to exceed two hundred and ten thousand eight hundred thirty-four dollars and twenty cents to be paid from the American Rescue Plan Act funds using the two thousand and twenty-three concrete asphalt paving drainage water and sewer contract as recommended by the Public Works Director. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I would like to, can we like make some acronyms for this? Concrete asphalt paving drainage water sewer, okay, let's vote.
Yonda?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Item nine, consider a motion from Kendall Dillon of Crafton Toll on behalf of their client to replat seventeen hundred Health Center Parkway Lot One, Block One, Yukon Parkway West Phase Six to create lots one B, one C, and Block One of Yukon Parkway West Phase Six, Canadian County, Yukon, Oklahoma, as recommended by the Planning Commission. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote.
Yonda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Item ten, consider a motion for a conditional use permit from Steve Camp for temporarily placing an RV on agricultural land to live in while constructing a house located at seventeen four oh-one West Foreman Road. Legal description is T twelve N R O six W S ten N W four A hashtag one P T N W four B E G N W slash C T H E one one thirty-five point seven seven S two six three five point eight eight west to southwest slash C Yukon, Canadian County, Oklahoma, as recommended by the Planning Commission. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Selby?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Item eleven, consider approving a vote on behalf of the City of Yukon for Justin Battles, Assistant City Manager, Mustang, Oklahoma, for a seat on the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group Board of Trustees. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Can you tell us a little bit about this and the person and what's going on? So everybody will know.
Mr. Battles is the Assistant City Manager for the City of Mustang. He's been very involved in everything at the, the City of Mustang. He's been a great friend of ours for, associate for us to be able to work with them and see what they're doing and, and we've worked with them on several projects. He came up to me and asked me at our last meeting that we had together, he told me that he was running for a seat on the OMAD Board, which is Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group, which is who insures us. He would like to be nominated, he's already nominated, but to be on that board, he would like our vote.
So that he's not getting it, he's just getting our vote and then it will be determined.
Right.
Good.
Justin's a very good person. Right, let's vote, please.
Yonda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Gillen? I'm sorry, Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes. Is there any new business tonight?
I have no new business tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Council discussion, we'll start with Councilwoman Yonda.
Well, I was very pleased to hear of the audit report. Excellent, excellent job by all the city and staff and our CPAs, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Wooten?
Can I echo that?
You always do.
There we go. Oh, Donna.
Councilwoman Zimmerman?
I, I would say the same thing and also it's nice to see this road striping and some of these sewer lines going, so that's exciting.
Okay, some updates, Festival of the Child is Saturday, May sixth, from ten to four P.M. at the city park. You can get your tickets at Children's New World, Childhood Learning Academy, all Y and B locations, Yukon Community Center, Dell Robertson, Jackie Cooper. Also, community bike rides Saturday, May twentieth, from nine thirty to ten thirty. It will start at Taylor Park BMX Track, free family event to raise bike safety awareness. It'll be no registration, just bring your bike on out and here's the one the kids have all been waiting for. Pools and splash pads will open Saturday, May twenty-seventh. I'd like to say thank you to Inez Andrews, who served on our library board for so long. I'm sad to see her get off, but understand that sometimes you gotta just do some other things in your life, so I appreciate that. Also, the chamber banquet is this Friday. If you would like to see Councilwoman Wooten dress as Kiss Jean Simmons and Councilwoman Zimmerman dress as, who was I thinking earlier?
These are all lies, by the way.
Motley Crue, then please contact me and we'll take a vote in the majority rules, they'll have to attend the chamber. The rest of us will be attending in jeans and t-shirts. All right, make the most of your tomorrow, be kind to one another, this meeting is adjourned.